We're back in session. We are now on item 10, General Public Comments. Our first speaker is Jim Kenny. Jim Kenny? Going once. Mike Alvarez? Mr. Alvarez, I seen you out there.
The first speaker didn't come down?
No, I says Jan Kenny or Jim Kenny?
It was Jan Kenny. Jan Kenny, she was the nurse practitioner.
Oh, okay, so she's gone. Mr. Alvarez, you're on.
One thing I regret is that the building is empty. Because I was gonna say something else, but all this that I heard today changed my speech. I wanna God bless everybody that made this day possible. Because you folks up there have not just bid it on something very important, but you guys have made history whether you know it or not. Because for a lot of hundreds of years, people have been wanting to get somewhere where people care about other people. What I would like for you to do right now is the ones that said yes to this bill, to raise your hand again. Just one more time, please. You folks up there that said yes to the bill, raise your hand. Now, the thing that we can do, the ones that you, that said yes to this bill, to be able to make more money, we got the lottery. Why don't you have the lottery make a card with your photo on it and that, or say about the immigrants, a picture of immigrants or the picture of you folks that went for this bill. So when people go buy the lottery ticket, they can, the money that is on your card can go just for this situation that's happening now. The money that we have is gonna run out sooner or later. So if we can use the lottery to make more money, either a card with an immigrant on it or a card with the city councilors on it because you said yes to the bill. And those people that were here know who said yes and who said no. When they go to the 7-Eleven and buy a lottery ticket with your picture on it, they know that that money that's made with the lottery goes for just this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez, and thank you for your service, Council Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one comment here that might be relevant. The lottery is state money. The city of Albuquerque doesn't get any of it. I need no comment, just wanna let you know that these lottery money, if this were to ever happen, does not come to the city of Albuquerque. It's a state lottery, not a city lottery. Thank you, sir.
Maybe we should sell one to the city.
Patsy Dixon? Patsy Dixon, going once. After Patsy, it'll be Laura Dale, followed by Pony Be Hill? Left, okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Patsy Dixon, and I've had a problem with one particular officer, Art Gonzalez. I think he's an Assistant Deputy Police Chief here in Albuquerque. And he was following me to the Artichoke Cafe and looking at me like I was dust. And I've been poisoned four times in this town. At House Santa Del Rio in Old Town, Bricksen's, Don Sushi, and El Super. And I've had to go to the ER. So this is like, in the last three weeks, I've been to the ER. It feels like I'm always there. And I feel like he's in love with this man who is Roseanne Morissette of Gallup. And so because of that, he knows I know I complained to the complaint line, to the citizens complaint line. And I just was hoping that somebody would look into his affairs because with all these dead bodies that they found of those girls on the west side or wherever they found them, I feel like he's got something going and there's something dangerous about this person. And I've been deathly ill and I'm just lucky I'm standing here tonight, but I'm still recovering from a poisoning at Don Sushi and El Super just this past weekend. So I'd like to say, just Arthur Gonzalez is his name, and he's a male. And so is Roseanne Morissette. That's a male. So help me God. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Mr. Rayal will look into that. Laura Dale?
Madam President and Council members, this is speaking to the public access contract. I was gonna actually play the Ed Asner little PSA that I had from him, but it's a little too long. But it kinda wraps around back into that, which is, this is a cycle. You know, the old cultures talk about how everything's a snake that sort of circles back on itself, but it spirals out through time. So here we were back in 2012, going through this fiasco where the city sort of forces through this contract that doesn't seem to follow a lot of the proper compliances. And the public makes a huge outcry, and we get seven years of noncompliance. Now here we are back again, 2017, with the same contractor as seemingly the only bidder. Now I know there are sort of procurement reasons for that. We did make a formal protest with procurement and they turned us down. But I just would like to say, this was the fifth best public access station in the country before the city interfered with it. I would like to see it go back to there again. We are now looking at, and I'm not saying to give the contrast, contract to us per se, but quote-unquote now has the first Native American female television program director in public access history. They are also looking to provide a FEED school to the film industry for disadvantaged students who can't otherwise go to these film schools so that when we get the union overflow, these kids will be the first in line to be able to get some of those jobs and be on a track for union membership. So I'm just saying, Ed Asner got his start in public access. Look where it got him. It's time for the council to vote no on the recommendation of award to U public, GCMA, greater communities, whatever snake name he comes up with, and give the public access station back to the people so we can make it once again the fifth best station in the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roger Colty, followed by Martin Mickey, followed by Joni Griffiths. And those two folks are not here, but Roger Colty?
Yeah, Roger Colty. I need my eyes first. Hello, my name is Roger Colty, and I'm a producer for Anthem Live Rocks, which is a music show on the old Channel 27, that was before it was turned over. First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak today. And as we found out today, Albuquerque is a city of racial equality and cultural diversity. But as a Native American, it was very disappointing to see immigrants mistreating other immigrants. But here's the question, why is it this way? There are two reasons, misunderstandings and misconceptions we have among each other as people. A diverse media and communication amongst each other can clear up these misunderstandings. And as a producer, we helped to promote the New Mexico music scene because there was no support for New Mexico musicians at all, so we took it on. And as a Native American, I feel that the old Channel 7 was better because, to be honest with you, we as Native people, we have no newspapers, radio, or TV that to serve our communities. So, and also I got my media training at the old Channel 27 because there also is no training for media for Native Americans here in New Mexico at all. So I'd like it to go back to the way it used to be. And just as the city just voted on tonight to be the city striving for racial equality and cultural diversity, the same should be reflected in the media coming from New Mexico. Because communication is a human right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colty. Andrew Salazar? Andrew Salazar? Willard Hunter?
Willard authorized me to speak for him, but if you don't want to?
Yeah, I can't do that, I'm sorry. Kaylee Howard? Kaylee Howard? Downey X?
Hi, I had a couple things I wanted to talk about, so I'll try and make it quick. Thank you, everyone, though, for doing the hard work that you're doing. Thank you, Madam President. And thank you all councilors for staying late and working so hard to make City of Albuquerque run well. I just wanna say, out of, I had a friend who was harassed by a police officer. She ended up dead. Rose Ebaugh, she was a very strong supporter of public access. She came in with Ray Gardunio at one point in time. And I believe she asked for an extension because her time to, because her time to be at her house to fix the code violations under the nuisance abatement law, that was just a short period of time. And so when they went to court, that policeman threatened her on the way out because he was mad because that got extended from eight o'clock to six o'clock. And she was homeless with her high school student on Thanksgiving because of this officer and this nuisance abatement, which, again, the nuisance abatement law, when I was tenant advocacy project, has evicted people without notice, and the state law is notice of 30 days. And so with the police, being afraid of police as an indigenous woman, I wanna speak up for the women on the west side. A lot of them, I'm sure, were Native Americans. And I've heard rumors of police orgies picking up prostitutes and picking up, you know what, Native women, Native people. We're the number one homeless people here in Albuquerque. Not the immigrants, not whoever, Native Americans. We are the homeless and indigenous women. We are the number one who are not kept. And I just wanna say, I think that she's really brave to stand up for what she's talking about. I wonder how many of the women on the west side are indigenous? And I wonder why Rob Perry was one of the first people on site who didn't let anybody in except for two officers, if you look at the original police reports? Why was the head of the person who was running the for-profit prison system over there for two hours not letting anybody in before everybody from the cops could come in? That's a question that I have, and I'm scared to say that right now, you know? And I, because I have kids, you know? And I do, to a certain degree, trust the police. At the same time, I'm afraid of the police because I know there's good and bad. And so this is totally off-topic of the things that I want to talk about, but I, that just, in memory of Rose Ebaugh, who I feel like was pushed into the grave by the police. And her son who died, or I'm sorry, she died yesterday in 2006. And it was a couple days before her son graduated from high school. So I'm just bringing that up because, and a sister, an indigenous woman, is speaking up about her safety and her fear. And if this is something that needs to be looked into, then I want people to look into it because this needs to be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for your loss. Mr. Tadneminski?
Thank you. My name's Tadneminski. Well, what caught my attention also today, listening, you know, about homelessness. Well, how many people, homeless, different level, was put into the housing, baloney, that nothing has changed? Some always people come and go, losing housing. So things never change, never improved, and never will because that's a big business. Now, I saw Libro saying, selling, the Albuquerque is united, we have to be united. Well, Libro, Democrat destroying, they are destroying our city. Now, I'm not talking about, that's gonna be different issue about who's, about racism and so on, ethnic groups. Now, people ask me, what I was talking last couple meetings. So let me tell you, what the council tried to do at committee as whole, they throwing one amendment, which is increase, which by $15 trash collection. Right now, every homeowner pay $15.75, and here is tire. If they pass it, which is they will pass it, then they're gonna be, according to this bill, mandatory. So what they doing behind the door, they not, won't go to full council meeting. They gonna eventually pass it. That's what I was talking.
Thank you. Bill Wagner, followed by Amanda. Looks like Santiago.
Bill Wagner isn't here. Can I bring the youth who's on the list to come with me? And Tomas Martinez?
No, we're gonna have to just stick to the agenda. It's getting pretty late. So we have Bill Wagner. He is not here?
No, he's not here.
Okay, Amanda, Santiago?
Yeah.
And then the final speaker this evening will be Adrian Sanchez.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Santiago, and I'm a licensed clinical social worker and clinical program director of CTI, which stands for the Critical Time Intervention Program. And we are a program that's based out of Centro Savila, a small mental health agency located in the South Valley. And we provide affordable healthcare and social services to the broader community. And Adrian, I wanted him to start off because he's one of our youth participants in the CTI program. We service youth between the ages, or young people between the ages of 12 and 23. Those who fall, fallen through the cracks in the system. They're either looking at entering the system, they're in the system, or they're post-systems involved. And we try to help them to link to resources, but most of all, to really create healthy relationships in the community. So we're really grateful for the county and the city's funding and the money that they provided us, as well as all of our hard-working collaborations that we've made with various agencies in the community to provide opportunities like Adrian had. And when he gets the chance to tell his story, you'll understand a little bit more. But what this program generally does is that we're very, an intensive therapeutic program. So we offer therapy four times a week, up to four times a week. That includes family and individual therapy, substance abuse groups. And we also do different types of clinical groups. We provide in-home services and in the office, anywhere that the child or the young person might need those services. And so this is kind of out of order. But, you know, our goal is to make sure that they're building healthy relationships. We wanna decrease the intergenerational trauma that we see coming through our offices. That's a consistent. And then we also wanna increase the self-advocacy skills because we find when the youth are going through the systems, they lose their voice, and the parents do as well. And so we're working with them on co-regulation to make sure that the youth has a voice and they can advocate for themselves in the way that will have positive outcomes. And hopefully Adrian's story will give you a little bit more detail as to what we do.
Hi. So just like Amanda said, I'm a youth at CTI. I was recently facing a lot of charges in the youth detention center. And when I got out, I needed like a place to help me with, like, getting back on track, you know? And so I found Central, the CTI. And they helped me with, you know, getting my mindset back on like being good, you know? Going back to school and being good to my family. I go to therapy, individual therapy, four times a week. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then I have family therapy, therapy two times a week, too. And that was really important to me because they really helped me with my family. You know, my family never used to get along with me. But now that we've talked to CTI and they helped me with all that, we're moving to Texas and, you know, we're starting over again. So they also helped me, they went to court with me. And they actually like helped, like make the judge understand that I really do wanna change and, you know, that I, and they basically gave me a second chance, which is, I was really lucky to have because, you know, but, um... Oh yeah, they also like showed me different ways to communicate with people. I wasn't really good at that, but they helped me with that. And they also helped me in my relationship, too. They have my girl come over there sometimes and talks. And we have like, yeah, relationship therapy. And so yeah, they've just been a really good help to me, and I really do appreciate them a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was our final speaker. Best of luck, Adrian. Sounds like you have a promising future. With that, we will move on to announcements. Counsel Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee that was scheduled for Monday, May 13th at 5:00 PM in the council committee room is canceled.
Counsel Bitten.
Thank you. There will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, May 15th at 5:00 PM in the council committee room on the night floor.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you. There will be a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, May 16th at 5:00 PM in the Vincent E. Griego Chambers.
Now we are on item 12, public hearings. This is, the matter is AC 19-1. William Sabatini appeals the zoning hearing examiner's decision. Mr. Melendez, you are on.
Thank you, Madam President and councilors. The council heard a full hearing of this particular appeal at its last meeting, and it decided to reject the appeal, reverse the decision of a zoning hearing examiner, and deny the request for a conditional use permit to allow auto sales in the MXL zone. The council determined that it would adopt findings at this meeting tonight. You have findings before you that have been drafted by your staff relating to the discussion and deliberation that happened at the last meeting. You may adopt these findings, which will support your decision for denial. We can discuss those findings, or you may consider others of your choosing.
Madam President?
Counsel Bitten.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt the findings as written by staff.
Second? There's a motion in several seconds to adopt the findings of AC 19-1. All those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on item 13, approvals. This is EC 354, Mayor's Recommendation of Award to Lamar Advertising for Advertising Transit Vehicle Buses and Shelters. I move approval. There's a motion in second for approval. Is no one signed up to speak? Do we have any, any questions? Counsel Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President. My question on this contract, I noticed that Lamar will be responsible for cleaning of the bus stops and not just the ads, protective covers of the ads, but bus stops themselves, which I was really happy to see. But I'm just wondering if that is a new addition to this contract? Or is that something that's been in the previous contracts?
Mr. Rayal?
Madam President, someone from Transit here, Chris, is here to answer any questions.
Yeah, madam, Madam President, Counsel Gibson. I can use the other one? Oh, oh, this one is tall people, great. That is not a new item. That was in the previous contract as well. So, and that is for the cleaning of the shelters. And then there's also advertising on the shelters as well.
So, I drive past a lot of bus stops that aren't, that, you know, really do need attention. So what do you think is a reasonable expectation that we might have with Lamar in cleaning bus stops? Probably maybe not every day, maybe a couple times a week, once a week? Anybody speak to that?
Let's see, I might bring up our deputy director.
Good evening. Annette Paez, Associate Director, or Deputy Director for the Transit Department. Madam President and Ms. Gibson, we would expect that, yes, they should be at least cleaned weekly. So we can actually, we're working on the contract right now and writing provisions that will go into that contract. We can write that in to have a process where we review those bus stops and look and see about monitoring it on a weekly basis. But, but yes, we can do that in this contract. We've been talking about adding features to the contract so that we can address some of those concerns.
Thank you. And if I may, just a real quick follow-up to that is, probably a lot of them are fine, but the ones that are really heavily used, you know, like the one right here on Lomas, east of Second, on the south side of the street, that gets a lot of use and it's, it gets kinda funky-looking, so. And other ones that, you know, I think that get heavy use probably may need a little more attention than maybe some of the ones on, I don't know, Rail Grand maybe, or Coors, I don't know, so. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
No, thank you, and we will make sure that we start addressing some of those issues and looking at those bigger used bus stops. You're right, there are a lot of people that use certain bus stops a lot of the time. And so we really need to start addressing with Lamar those kind of... We actually just internally had a meeting to go over some of this stuff, so we appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Counsel Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. My question is to Ms. Paez in regards to the Adopt a Stop program. I know there's a pilot project out there today where volunteers are going out, going out and going to these different stops and keeping them clean. How is that program coming together?
Counsel President Penya and Counsel Sanchez, it is a great program. One of our employees, Dwayne Baker, has really taken the route, that he's kind of just taken it into his stead, and he's done a great job with that. We've gotten a lot of people that have been interested and are actually coming forward and using it to adopt a stop. We even have drivers who's adopted a stop now, and they're doing a great job. We're providing the cleaning supplies to them, and they're keeping those stops clean. So again, anybody hearing this out there, this is a perfect opportunity to adopt a stop if you'd like to. We'd be more than willing to have you come out and adopt a stop. But yes, it's working well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Davis?
Really quickly, Madam President, I know this is a question that we've had during the budget, and we've had some budget hearings going back and forth. Curious for Mr. Rayal if this is an item that needs immediate action tonight, or because it does have a significant impact or some impact on the transit budget. If this is something that we should, could defer until after consideration of the budget so that we can make a decision about whether we think that revenue is necessary for the city? I know this council's asked a number of questions over the years about the use of the raps and other things for safety. And the administration was looking at some of those revenue sources and some of those answers. And I think we have some new data from Transit that they just presented about safety on the route and others. And I wonder if it's something we could defer until later or if the administration felt like this is something that needs to be in place.
Madam President and Counselor Davis, actually, you know, I would suggest that we approve this tonight. I think there's plenty of opportunity for us to look at these issues through the course of the budget. I know that there's been conversation about the raps themselves, how they work. We now have an opportunity to hopefully get more cleaning of the stations through the process, which means it helps us budget-wise. And I think the other issue is simply is that we are getting into the summer, the summertime where we're actually doing a lot more, you know, advertising on the buses. And so it'd be an opportunity for us to not lose revenue as we move forward. But look, we are very interested, I know that you all, as I said, have had concerns about the raps. The mayor, I think, shares some of those concerns. And so I think there's some ways for us to really regulate those with this contractor and... for us to really regulate those with this contractor and, uh, and work through it.
Counselor Benton.
And I know I've made a bunch of noise about this in the past. Um, and I appreciate, first of all, I appreciate Lamar for responding and, and being the only respondent to this, uh, program and also appreciate the need for the revenues because I'm a big transit supporter and the more transit revenues, the better, as far as I'm concerned. My concerns have been twofold. One's pretty esoteric anyway, it's just the aesthetics. But I also appreciate, I meant to say the other thing that I appreciate about the program is all the, the public service announcements that, that we have on the buses. So the aesthetics is one thing. I've just really having a nice, clean-looking fleet that's consistent and that's recognizable. The other one, uh, probably more important to me is the visibility from outside the bus. People just don't, you know, it, I know that there's good visibility from the inside out, but my experience is from the outside in. You can't really tell if anybody's on the bus, you can't really tell who's on the bus. And that's something I'm concerned about. Uh, you know, I just wonder if there's not a, a middle road here where we would use a large proportion of the bus, but not cover the, the passenger windows. So, just something, I also recognize, I believe, Madam Chair, that, that this would require, if, if we were to reject this, it would require some renegotiation, maybe back to square one type of thing. So, I appreciate, uh, COO Rayal, I think we were calling you CAO earlier, but you, you were CAO. Anyway.
Madam President.
Memory fails. But, but, but I mean, you know, I appreciate that, uh, willingness to talk about it, but I don't know where we go from here.
Madam President, not to belabor the point of Counselor Benton, but, um, you know, we've got a rate chart here that, where they talk about the different rates for the different wraps. Um, I think there's plenty of opportunity for us to sit and look at the issues you just raised. Uh, again, as I said, the mayor has, has had concerns about the windows themselves. Um, and I, I think that having a contract in place gives us a bit of leverage to, to really dictate some of the, how we want this to, to roll out, if you will. Um, and so we'd be happy to, to continue that conversation.
Counselor Sanchez.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I am not a great fan of the wraps, but at the same time, one of the advantages with the wraps and the money that is coming in, it keeps the fares a little more reasonable for those individuals that are utilizing our bus service. And if we can keep the fares down and reasonable, I would support that with some advertisement.
Mr. Rayal, are the wraps gonna go on the R buses as well?
Madam President, um, that is still a question that has not been completely solidified, but, um, we are making provisions for at least some areas of, of those buses to have at least some level of, of advertising. They won't be the wraps that you, uh, see on, on some of the other 40-foot buses, but there'll be some opportunity for some advertising, at least, uh, that's the preliminary discussion.
So if we did defer it, would it, how would it impact the progress or what we're trying to do? Because I have some of the same concerns, you know, I just really would like to see something more solid instead of solidify some of the co, contract, um, negotiations and, and things that are in the contract, whether it be the buses or where on the buses the wraps would be. I just, you know, I just get concerned because, um, the people that are gonna, um, ride the, um, the regular bus and not the R bus will just tend to be more working-class people and I just, you know, feel like they should have something that...
And Madam President, I, I understand that concern. Um, as I said earlier, I think we, getting this approved gives us the opportunity to negotiate that with, with the, with the contractor. Uh, there's different rate cards and rate fees for, for different wraps, whether it's the entire bus or a portion, et cetera. Uh, we can have that conversation with the contractor as we, as we put in the contract together to, um, make sure that we're doing this in a way that is aesthetically pleasing, but also that we can make the revenue that, that we need to help offset the costs of the service. So, um, as I said before, I think we have a better opportunity. And secondly, I think, if I'm not mistaken, and I'll defer to Annette here, but they are the only company that responded to the RFP.
That's correct.
And so, and that, um, and so, uh, you know, we'd be deferring it just not to have something and lose the opportunity for revenue. So, um, we'd be happy to work with you all and, and get some, uh, some designs, if you will, that might make some sense.
Okay. Um, Counselor Benton.
So, we're approving the award. Are we approving a contract? No. So, I think, I'm, I'm open to that. If we're approving the award, we appreciate Lamar's interest in working with us. I, I'm prepared to do that as long as we can keep up some dialogue about, about how this is really gonna look. And, I mean, there's, buses are big, there's a lot of space on there. Maybe, I, and, and I also recognize in the write-up that Lamar has a, a brand of sorts of a larger wrap, a bigger and better wrap, but that, that maybe this, uh, given that the administration expressed some of the same concerns that, that, uh, though you could negotiate something with them, it'd still be mutually beneficial.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Well, with that, thank you, we have a motion in the second for approval of EC 354. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on EC 372, Mayor's Recommendation of Award to Presbyterian Health Plan, Inc. for fully insured group medical insurance, fully insured, insured group medical only and/or self-funded medical insurance. Um, there's a motion and a second for approval. Is there anyone signed up to speak on this? No? Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. And, Mr. Rayal, I do have some questions regarding this and, um, and a couple of the questions are, I, I know that, um, so we, we did choose Press, correct?
Madam President, Counselor Winter, that's correct.
And there were two, there were two bidders.
Right.
And, um, and I think, and then there's an, the other issue that we also have is, um, if we're gonna do self-insured or go with the others, and when is that gonna be decided?
Madam Chair, um, Madam President, excuse me, and Counselor Winter, as we go through the budget process, as Mr. Bacht, you know, talked about that, we will make that determination.
So, just with Press, um, and I've had to deal with Press a little bit, um, in the past and it's, I, if we start talking about healthcare in New Mexico, it doesn't look bright, 'cause I know to get a specialist, it's taken two to three months for an employee to get a specialist, to see a specialist. And I know that some folks, as their primary care, only have a, a nurse practitioner with Press. So there's some issues here. Has, that kind of thing's been addressed with Presbyterian during this contract phase?
Let me have our folks from HR talk a little bit more about the negotiations and the conversation.
Good evening, Madam President. Counselor Winter. Uh, yes, as a matter of fact, over the past three or four years, one of the biggest things that we've really tried to address is access for our employees out there. One of the biggest things is the mobile health center out there. We contracted with Presbyterian to bring a mobile health center to just the city of Albuquerque and our participating entities. This mobile health center isn't available to Presbyterian employees, it isn't available to state of New Mexico employees, to anybody else, just the city of Albuquerque employees. Once again, to, um, increase that, uh, access to care for our members out there.
So what about specialists? So if it's taking three months, is that considered a long time or is it considered not so long to wait? 'Cause I know as an, as a employee or benefit of our, our, our system, three months is a long time to wait for a specialist.
Madam President, Counselor Winter, unfortunately, that is just part of New Mexico. To bring healthcare clinicians to New Mexico is one of the biggest challenges we have. So, it's not just exclusive to Presbyterian or to the Loveless market out there. To bring specialists here to New Mexico is quite a challenge.
Thank you. Um, and Madam President, just one more question. So if we, we start looking at self-insured, how is that gonna improve the system that we have now?
As far as plan design premiums, um, we will have more control over that. Being fully insured, we are very much buying insurance, if you will, off the shelf, so we very much had to listen to the insurance company on what our plan design looked like and stuff. Being self-insured, we'll have more control over our plan design, uh, control over premiums, control over copayments, deductibles.
Mr. Sanz, I just wanna say that I really appreciate your knowledge and what you bring and how you support your employees. Thank you, Madam President. So, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Winter. Counselor Sanchez.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. We heard, we heard a speaker earlier talk about, um, basically choices of doctors, where individuals could go, uh, not having to pay a deductible for their, for their drugs. I mean, what was the decision to pick Press over this other company?
Madam President, Counselor Sanchez, uh, if I could just clarify a couple of things out there, we do have those same kind of benefits out there. Right now, we do have a $150 deductible, but if you go to your primary care physician or if you do have to pick up prescriptions, the deductible is not applied to any of that there. Uh, if you go to the mobile health center, there is no deductible there. If you go to your PCP just for a normal visit, there is no copayment there and it does not apply to the deductible. So, a little bit of inaccuracies there, but once again, increasing our access and really trying to engage our employees to establish a relationship with the clinician, whether it is a nurse practitioner, a specialist, or a primary care physician, that's been one of our biggest goals out there.
So for those employees that are currently going to the Mayo Clinic that have been awarded that opportunity, uh, that will still be available?
That is still there. If they've already been approved for that, that is still there. One other thing, Counselor Sanchez, um, we are one of the only, we are the only group in New Mexico. Uh, once again, because of our leverage with Presbyterian, we contract, we, in our contract with them, we had them negotiate access to DeVita Health Plan out there. So, currently, right now, out of our 18,000 members, 1,500 of our members do see DeVita primary care physicians. And once again, that's not available to state of New Mexico, to UNM, or anybody else. It's just exclusive to the city.
And real quickly, you talked about, and I'd asked a question before regarding the municipal league, that we'd all, did we look with, uh, to look at Burnley County as our, uh, care provide, working side by side to provide insurance for their employees and our employees to even get a better rate?
Uh, Madam President, Counselor Sanchez, if you recall, about four or five years ago, we did have Burnley County as part of our, our group mix out there. And even being fully insured, we do look at, uh, the cost of our entities that are participating with our program out there. About four or five years ago, uh, Burnley County's loss ratio, the amount of claims we were paying out to court versus the amount of premium we were bringing in, their loss ratio was upside down and they were really costing us a, a lot more money as an entire group. We gave them the opportunity to stay with us, uh, applying a surcharge to that premium and they elected to, to go out on their own.
Well, I was told by the commissioners that they left because the rates were just too high with the city.
Because we gave them that opportunity. If they, they were costing the city and the participating entities more to be a part of our program out there.
Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm not sure that I really, maybe you didn't, I, maybe I didn't hear an answer, maybe you didn't give it, an answer that was discernible to me. When Counselor Winter asked if we would have access to, uh, specialists, quick access, we have to wait 90 days or whatever, did I, what, what does that work? If we have our, our, our practitioner that we, as our, as our primary physician and we need to see a specialist, do what kind of timeframe? Is there any guarantee of a quick service? Do I have to wait until I die and they do an autopsy? What part of this, how long will it take?
Madam President, Counselor Jones, uh, being fully insured or self-funded does not change the number of specialists here in New Mexico out there. So, I wish I could go out there and say to see an orthopedic surgeon is two or three weeks, but once again, it depends on the volume of, uh, patients that they're seeing out there. Um, we are doing everything that we can to encourage and send people, uh, clinicians to be part of, to come to New Mexico and going for it, being self-funded. It, uh, gives us a little more leverage to maybe work with, uh, Uni, uh, the University of New Mexico and their clinicians to bring some of their doctors in trainings, nurse practitioners, to be a part of, uh, the mobile health clinic or an onsite clinic here. So, once again, hopefully increasing access. The specialists, uh, we're doing everything we can. I know Loveless, uh, is doing everything they can, Presbyterian is doing everything they can to encourage physicians to, to stay here in New Mexico.
So, if I may, basically, the answer is no.
I can't give you a specific time on orthopedics or, or specialist.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Counselor.
Counselor Borrego.
Madam President and Counselors, on, follow-up on Counselor Winter and Counselor Jones, um, whatever the administration can do to encourage Presbyterian to, um, you know, especially for specialists. I, this morning called Presbyterian to get a, an appointment for a twisted knee and to see a, uh, orthopedic doctor is in July. So, you know, my pain level was still there and, you know, and I, I think to myself, if, I mean, it, it's an injury, but somebody who has a serious injury, I mean, like, you know, the point of death or something, I mean, clo, you know, something that's really, um, more severe than a twisted knee. Um, so anything that we can do with the administration and to push them, um, you know, please.
Madam President and Counselor Borrego, uh, we are just not purchasers of health insurance. We are the true users. So, I am, my spouse, my family, and just to share a, a personal story, my mother needed surgery as well for a hernia and it took six weeks to get through there as well. And so, I mean, it doesn't matter who you are, I mean, there is a limited, finite number of specialists. And even at that time, I know Presbyterian, if they are filled, for example, on general surgeons out there, they have no problem going to DeVita and saying, "Look, do your surgeons have, uh, access within their panel to see this?" So, it is not just, uh, one industry just, you know, holding all the specialists and someone else has, has room to see other patients. It is, it is a New Mexico issue.
Well, and just to follow up, you know, we had Loveless here before us tonight, um, and, you know, the contracts, the RFPs come out, I guess, on a yearly basis, so, you know, we, we really need to encourage them as much as possible.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you. This is a little bit off topic, maybe a lot off topic, but, uh, one of the things that concerns me with Presbyterian, I think they've done a pretty good job, you know, with the health plan for years, but I think, uh, Prespa, Albuquerque Ambulance is a wholly owned subsidiary of Presbyterian, is that right?
Um, Madam President and Counselor, I think they are, yes.
And Albuquerque Ambulance has been giving us a really hard time. They've been, uh, trying to prevent the city of Albuquerque from getting a full authorization to transport people. So they're talking about access to healthcare, they're denying access to healthcare, 'cause right now, if someone's hurt and we need to transport them, we have to call and get their permission. And, and we are the, the sort of, the agency that's sort of in charge of this whole area, so I, I, I'm a, a little bit disappointed with, with Presbyterian for, for doing that and wanting us to give them our business. So I don't know if you have a response for that.
Well, Madam President and Counselor Harris and members of the council, we've certainly had our conversations on that very topic with AFR and, and our concerns related to the, the processes that's in place today. So, um, rest assured, we are working that issue as well because we share your concern.
And just so people, uh, understand, we're, I guess we're having hearings before the Public Regulation Commission, we're having to get approval to get our full transport authority, is that right?
Madam President and Counselor Harris, that's correct. The, uh, PRC regulates the, uh, the area that these ambulance companies can perform their work and, uh, and if you are trying to get into their area of service, you have to go before the PRC to get permission to do so.
Okay, and I guess at one point, we were almost there and then I guess we withdrew, but, um, I understand that the, the Keller administration is committed to pushing this issue all the way.
Madam President and Counselor Harris, we certainly are working with them and with AFR, um, and, and trying to strike some kind of a balance because there are concerns about that very issue in certain parts of the city, uh, just as a whole. And, and just so you all know, we've had this issue with the city for, ever since I was here before. So, it's a longstanding issue, um, and, uh, we're making, we're hopefully making some progress in that area.
Okay. Well, I hope, I hope we make a lot of progress, 'cause I guess other municipalities are doing the same thing. Okay, thanks.
Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. I hate to belabor this, but I think we're trying to make it better for our employees. And, and Counselor, I'm, Mr. Rayal, I remember that when they changed, the previous administration's changed, 'cause we had two healthcare providers, didn't we? We have Press and Loveless. And then the previous administration thought that it would be better and maybe less expensive if we went with one healthcare and we went with Press. So do you see that today, that with one provider, it's still less expensive for the city and for the employees than it was when they had a choice between two providers?
Madam President, Counselor Winter, yes, uh, from my professional experience, yes. Uh, being self-funded, once again, we're not gonna buy insurance, we're gonna use, if I can use Presbyterian as the example, we're using them as our third-party administrator. So whether it was Blue Cross, Blue Shield, or Loveless, they're an administrator. So being self-funded, as we, as we progress, if we wanted to direct contract with Loveless, for example, if we wanted to direct contract with UNM physicians, we could do so and still have Presbyterian just administrate our claims. So, that, uh, those options are now in front of us, that we can do that.
Madam Chair, last question, and I really think I...
Counselor Winter.
Think we should be self-insured. The other question is, had someone talked to me about a medication and so for a year and a half, they were paying one price for a medication, all of a sudden... All of a sudden, their medication went up from $10 a month to $50 a month and to a different tier. And so, how does a contract work so that, that the healthcare company can do that?
Madam President, Counselor Winter, on, on an ongoing basis, now that we're going to be self-funded, we're going to use what's called a PBM, a pharmacy benefit manager. So, on an ongoing basis, a PBM uses what's called a formulary. A formulary is a list of medications that are most commonly prescribed for all of, all of us out there. Now, from time to time, medications lose their patent, they come off. So, a lot of times, these pharmacy benefit managers, they will look if there's a medication falling off, it's going to become generic, the patent expired or something like that. They look at, number one, the efficacy. If, is this medication the most effective medication for this type of condition out there? And from time to time, it does change. Like I said, patents wear off. There may be a new generic on the market. So, the brand-name formulary medication may not, may be removed in place of a generic medication. And, in hopes of encouraging our people to use the generic medications to, to save a little bit of money out there. Now, once again, if there is a prior authorization, or if there's an efficacy standard that that patient cannot take that generic medication, there is always a, a path to a formulary medication.
Okay. And just for clarification, I think I was waved at that there was four bidders, actually, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And I just want to say, I love A. We have to go through a lot just to, so, anyone else? Counselor Davis?
Really quickly, and maybe, and I'll give you a very much, Mr. Rayal, I said, no use for to mention it, and we heard during the earlier speaker, and I thank Madam President for allowing them to, to add their comments early, because we knew this would get late. But when we considered this, oh, I don't know, started this process a year or so, almost two years ago, probably now, really taking a serious reevaluation of self-insurance, we considered some options that ultimately would allow employee choice. And I know there's a great deal of interest, as we can tell here, of being sure that we have access to those things. But this original RFP was, or at least was awarded or designed with Presbyterian, as I understand, to help us transition to that, establish that. But it would not prevent us in the future from putting out additional RFPs or considering additional choice options down the road, right? There's, I think what I'm saying is, there's no exclusivity in this contract if we agree today. Is that right?
Madam President, Counselor Davis, that is correct. We can go out to RFP next year if we would like to.
I, I just would like to add, I think this is an important thing. It's a big deal for the city. It's one of those late-night things that costs a whole bunch of money, but it's a really big deal in the way we deal with our healthcare. Saves our employees a lot of money. Y'all have put a lot of work into it. But I'd really love to see us, as we get the, the feet up from under it and we feel confident here to really consider going out to RFP or RFQ and just to see what would be that, what kind of options would be available in the market as we expand those for our employees. Because I think we'll find some of the things that we may not have access to today that might be available that would be great benefits for our associated entities as well. So, thank you.
Madam President, Counselor Davis, as we move forward, like I said, being self-funded now, we now have the ability to partner with groups like Albuquerque Public Schools, who share our same demographic, and we can really corner the market in direct contracting with some physicians, I mean, maternity care, for example. So.
Counselor Borrego.
I would absolutely encourage us to look at more than one provider in the future, because I think it, it spurs a little bit of competition as well. I happened to sit on the RFP committee, like, 10 years ago, when we had more than one provider. And, you know, I think it also offers an option for employees and to assure that, you know, the competing interests are trying to offer the best product to our employees.
Okay. Well, with that, thank you. So, if there's no other discussion, Mr. Rayal, anything else to add?
Urged your support.
There's a motion, a second on the floor for an approval of EC 372. All those in favor say yes. Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is EC 375, Mayor's Recommendation of Award to Trillium Transportation Fuels for Daytona CNG Station. Is there a motion? Or, there's a motion, a second? Okay, there's a motion, a second. So, is there any discussion on this? No discussion? Counselors? Counselor Benton?
Just a quick question. What's the status of the fueling station at Yale, and what's the prognosis on that?
President Penya and Counselor Benton, the Yale facility still has its CNG station. It's still operating. We, we lease it monthly, and we will evolve away from Yale once we go to Daytona.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Mr. Rayal?
Urged your support.
There's a motion and a second for EC 375. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on item 14, final actions. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. This is O-47. That is granting a cable franchise renewal to Comcast of New Mexico LLC to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system in the public right-of-way and to provide cable services within a franchise area within the city of Albuquerque. And Counselor Winter was going to recuse himself.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll recuse myself on this vote.
And there is also one amendment. It is in your packet, and that would be Committee Amendment Number One to O-18-47. And this amendment reads the, number one, the attached document replaces and is hereby adopted as Exhibit C, Comcast Business Communications LLC Dark Fiber Lease Agreement.
So, there's a motion, a second for Amendment One?
That is correct. Madam President?
To O-47. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes back on the bill. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I urge your support. This is a 10-year contract. Comcast will be paying the maximum amount they can pay to the city of Albuquerque under the contract from before, an agreement. And I think they've been a good team member of our community over the years, and would urge your support.
Any discussion, counselors? Okay. Well, with that, we have a motion and a second for approval of O-47.
I'm sorry, Madam President. Sorry about that. We have two speakers for this item.
Oh, you're right. Sorry about that. Colleen Gorman, followed by Mr. Tad Nemenski.
Hi. So, I'm guessing you're extending the ordinance and still working on negotiating the contract, because I've been looking for it. I haven't been able to find it. So, sorry. Hello again, counsel. Thank you again for all your work you do so late. I just, I just want to remind people that back in 2015, when you had a focus group on PEG access, that the stakeholders were PEG community advocates, educators, and media stakeholders. I am a member of each group, as an, as a free speech supporter, as a certified teacher, and as the executive director of quote-unquote, "which will be taking over the educational access contract." We're currently in negotiations right now. The goals, I think, that were really important, that was brought up in 2015, was transparency in the decision-making regarding the franchise agreement. Also, with regards to transparency with cable franchise funding, I don't know what happened to the cable hearing and franchise board, but I believe they have been disbanded. And, you know, having some of this information available on a website would be really helpful to those of us who are, who want to support freedom of speech. Also, expanding physical points of access, this is an ADA issue that I think was glossed over last time, because I know that 519 Central is not ADA accessible, because the studio is upstairs. Maybe things are changing. But also, the current public access operator, I don't believe makes it accessible for the public in general, or also for people with, with disabilities. I did ask GovAccess16 if they would be willing to support me in supporting producers with disabilities to host and produce their own television shows, especially to get information like the program called ABLE out. ABLE is a way for the state to help shelter funding so that people can not lose their SSI and Medicaid benefits. And I guess last thing, I just want you to ask to not vote for the current recommended bidder, because of the censorship, the contractual obligations that have not been met, and that the fact that they really are not public access.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. My name, Tad Nemenski. Here is, I have issue right here. Try to, okay, speak about this franchise. City has franchise, well, Comcast sold that franchise to city of Albuquerque, which is run by Media Resources on the bar of Florida. And the manager, its manager, Diego Lucero, is not, is not responding to some question, what's going on with those right, right here cameras. Like, I'm looking for the answers. I also understand, and I spoke to deputy director at, at, just a second, at, not, what is that department? Anyway, I can't get answer either from them. One of the departments who oversight Diego Lucero. So, here is, my issue is also, it is very obvious, are edited, not full picture show. Yes, it is also can be evidence and should be evidence if something does happen here in these chambers. So, anyway, here is accountability and also transparency issue with this government right here. City Council Chamber, that is the issue right here. And let me tell you, I want a public, let them know what's going on. Thank you.
Counselor Sanchez to close.
Again, thank you, Madam President. One of the speakers, the first speaker, spoke about a totally different issue that's being now looked at by the council. It has nothing to do with the agreement with Comcast. This is a 10-year contract. And again, they've been very good about paying the city a very responsible portion, based on what each consumer pays, and I urge your support.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second for an approval of O-47 as amended. We didn't, you didn't amend this, did you? Yes, you did. As amended, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
Madam President?
Oh, yes.
I just want to quickly thank Ms. Janee from the city's attorney's office, who was really responsible for this negotiation, along with Ms. Nan Winter, our consultant. So, I just, it was a year, like, two-year-long process that she went through, and I just want to appreciate her.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. So, next, we are on item B. Counselor Gibson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Item B is Rule Amendment Number One. It's amending the city council rules of procedure, Article Two, Section Four, relating to the Internal Operations Committee. Going to move a due pass on this, moving the floor sub. So, I need to move the underlying bill first and then the floor sub, I believe.
Yeah. Madam President, Counselor Gibson, I believe you moved the floor substitute at the last meeting.
Oh, okay. All right. So, so I'll go ahead and move the floor sub, and I do have an amendment.
It was already moved? Okay. So, we're, we're good. You're good to go.
Okay. So, then, I have an amendment, which is in your bill books, and, of course, now I can't bring it up, but this would be amendment. Yeah. Thank you. So, I'll go ahead and read the amendment. So, I'm page one, line 15, strike the term "president chairs" and replace with, just to omit that, remove the president chairs. And the explanation here is that it will remove the requirement for the council president to chair the Internal Operations Committee. It would just be the same as any of our other boards or committees. Instead, another counselor appointed by the president, as is done with other committees of the council, city council. So, so that's, that's amending it. And the floor sub does allow for
Counselor Gibson, so that's the amendment?
That's the amendment. Sorry.
Okay. So, there's a motion, and, is there, there's a motion, a second for an amendment to floor sub RA1. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no?
That's too bad. That's a good amendment.
Not good enough.
So, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes. We are back on the bill on floor sub RA1.
Yeah. It is a good amendment. But let me tell you, let me tell you why. It's part of the bigger story about what I'm trying to do with this rules amendment, is to not just make a carbon copy of city council for internal ops, but to offer something else for the, besides council, as we sit here, but to offer something else for the director to come to for advice or consultation, or, or whatever that may be. And I understand that this, this committee has, does, has not met for a long time, and typically, that's the, you know, that's what happens. It meets pretty infrequently. But the reality is, is that it seems like the same people are on it pretty close, pretty much, year after year after year. And I just don't think that's good practice. It's not good business practice. So, I would prefer to see something that's a little more representational of, of council. And, oh, it also does call for quarterly meetings, you know, whether those actually happen or not. That would be up to, up to the, the committee itself or the committee chair. And it, the third thing it does call for is a direction for the council services director, Ms. Yara, to provide an update on the council budget, at least once a year during the April timeframe. So, that should, you know, give a little more, you know, give it a little more structure or organization. So, anyway, I would, you know, put this forth and, and really urge your support that, that this be adopted.
Counselor Benton.
You know, I do appreciate the, the thought that Counselor Gibson has put into this, and I think there's some, some good stuff in it. I think the, the idea of the presentation annually on the, on our department budget is important. And also, I just wanted to address the issue of counselors serving on the same committee year after year after year. There's actually another rule in the council rules that says that we shall attempt to rotate people through the committees. And I don't think we've always done a good job of that. I mean, some counselors, including myself, have stayed on the same committees for years and years. I have a lot of interest in land use, planning, and zoning, so maybe that's the reason I've done that, and people have, have accepted that. But I think that's a good rule. I do think we should rotate in and out of committees. And we haven't done that in this committee, I agree. So, but I, I don't see any problem, any, I don't really have any concern with, with the concept of, of having this be essentially a committee of the hall, having to do with internal operational matters of the council, and that, that we would, we would consider those sort of those sort of out of the glare of the full council meeting.
Any other questions? No? No one signed up to speak? So Counsel Gibson to close.
Again, I urge your support. Thank you.
So there is a motion in a second for floor sub RA1. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
Okay, let's wait. All those in favor say yes and raise your hand. Opposed, no, and raise your hand. That's a five-four? Okay. So the motion passes. So then we are now on item R2, amending the council rules of procedure, Article Three, Section 23 relating to the allocation of counselor expenses. I move a due pass. This is mine. I actually have an amendment, and I don't know if it's been distributed already or not. Okay, Chris will be distributing it. As she's doing that, I will start to, to read the amendments on line one, delete line six through 15 and replace with the following, and without going through the whole thing, I guess I can read it. Section 23, allocation of counselor expenses. Each counselor shall have, shall be allocated a maximum amount of $20,000 for council expenses related to discretionary constituent outreach, including but not limited to mailing notification expenses, district meetings, and small event sponsorships to government nonprofits. We read this into the record last time, correct? No? District meetings, small event sponsorships to government or not-for-profit entities. The director of the council services will evaluate requests for the use of the funds in consultation with the legal staff, based on whether, one, the expenses advance an identifiable goal of the city; two, the public benefit of the expense outweighs the incidental private benefit; and three, the expense is in compliance with all applicable city regulations and policies. The annual amount shall be calculated on a fiscal year basis from July 1 to the, to the 30th. The annual amount for each counselor shall be prorated for the period from January 1 to June 30th. This rule shall become effective July 1, 2019. The explanation on this is this amendment will increase, increase the amount of each counselor's constituent outreach fund from $5,000 to $20,000 per year. The funds will be allocated on a fiscal year basis and will be prorated for districts in election years. Use of the funds will be limited to mailing notifications, district meetings, small events, sponsorships to government and not-for-profit agencies and other community outreach activities. Each request for the use of the funds will be reviewed by the director of council services to ensure that the expense advances the identifiable goal of the city, the public benefit of the expense outweighs the incidental private benefit, and the, the expense is in compliance with all applicable city regulations and policies. And Steph, I don't know if you want to go on to explain this. I know that at the last meeting, we had some concerns. It's something that you typically do anyway, but to have it in the, the rule amendment, I think is, is, was a good criticism, so...
Yes, Madam President, I just want to add that it also allows, even if I weren't in this position, whoever is, to understand what type of expenses are allowed, and also for the public to understand how the counselors use their funds, so...
Yes. So, thank you. So I make a motion. Was there a second?
I'll just, the amendment.
The, oh, I didn't do the amendment. Okay. So there's a motion in second for the amendment to RA191. All those in favor...
Madam President, could I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
About the amendment? Thank, thank you. So the one thing I wanted to be clear about, the public benefit of the expense outweighs the incidental private benefit. Should, is that the way it reads, or should, I mean, I'm concerned about anti-donation. I mean, it should, it should, it should exceed the private benefit by the amount being expended by the city.
Right. So Madam President, it does say the public benefit of the expense outweighs the incidental private benefit? So the private, if there were a private benefit, it would be less than the public benefit?
So it wouldn't be any different than the special projects that we would approve in the past?
No. And I actually consulted with the purchasing attorney, Ms. Bradley, and our, our legal staff, Mr. Melendris, and they agreed that this was the proper language to, to handle the issue of anti-donation.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, I was very vocally opposed to the prior amount. I still believe $20,000 per counselor is a huge amount of money, when very few of us, if any of us, ever use the entire amount. You know, it's, it's, and how do we identify whether it's incidental private benefit? Everything we do is a private benefit with this. It depends on who the private party is. Is it a business? Is it a constituent? Is somebody we want to vote for as citizens, personally? What is it? I think this is, this is a fund that could be identified by the taxpayers as something that they don't have anything to say, and it isn't needed. No counselor has ever needed, needed any of this. Most of us have never spent the $5,000 that we've had. I think this is, I think this is playing rather recklessly with the taxpayers' money. And I, I think if we're going to keep this fund in and, and keep this going, that the maximum should remain at the $5,000. This is just, I can't see where it's necessary. Just because we have money this year doesn't mean that we should spend it, and certainly not on issues that, I, I do not like the term, whether it is, whether the public benefit of the expense outweighs the incidental private benefit. That's going to be pretty hard to measure. I think this is, I'm not comfortable with this. I think sends a bad message of what the counselors are doing with the taxpayers' money. So I can't support this amendment.
Counsel Benton, followed by Counsel Harris.
Yeah, just to, I'm sorry, I didn't get, I should have gotten this out of my previous question to, to Ms. Yara, but as I understand it, this is also somewhat changing the, it expands somewhat the reasonable use of these funds, small expense sponsorships, small, okay, it's getting late at night, small expense sponsorships to government or non-for-profit entities. I think that is sort of replacing what we were doing in the, the special projects fund. So I have two questions about that. I see you nodding that, that I've been characterizing that correctly. And this could be used for something like, whatever, some of the things that, that we've sponsored in the past with the special projects. And so that's good stuff. Those are community-based programs that, that, you know, we could share these funds depending on the need for one of these types of projects. It wouldn't all be necessarily just spent for, in, in any individual council district. So I wanted to clarify that. And the other thing I wanted to clarify before I favor this would be, would this be subject to, if, if there are not recurring available funds, would this be limited by that?
All right. Madam President, Counsel Benton, so you are correct. And I, I think this was, the amendment as far as the type of use of these monies is kind of getting towards what the old council projects fund did. I want to make a distinction between what I'm calling a small event sponsorship here, compared to a social service or cultural service contract where it's a full-blown professional technical contract with a scope that has performance measures. These would be smaller things like Counsel Winter, for instance, likes to sponsor the MLK track meet every year. That's not necessarily something we would measure performance, but he still would like to sponsor that. And so these would be smaller in, hopefully, dollar than the ones that sometimes we would go up to $25,000. And on the other side, as far as budget availability, so it's always a question of whether our budget can handle these amounts. And speaking to Counsel Gibson's previous rules amendment, you know, having you guys get a, having the council get an update on where our budget is in April would help you make decisions as to whether there's excess or we needed to find some more funding. So the, the budget availability is always a question.
Thank you, yeah. I, I think, you know, this does, in my mind, this is considerably different, and, and it does in a way go hand in hand with, with Counsel Gibson's rules amendment. Also, if we look at that special project fund, I asked you earlier, that, that typically, when we were, when we had it available, it was in the $200,000 to $250,000 range. If we divided that by nine, it'd be well over $20,000.
Thank you, Counsel Benton. And just to add to what you're saying, before I go off to Counsel Harris', is just to say that, you know, this is actually one of the things that I was thinking about Counsel Gibson in terms of her concern with the, with the internal ops and being able to access dollars that she needed in her community, that this would be a way to do those small, those small grants. Counsel Harris.
Yes, I don't, I know Ms. Yara talked about the public understanding, how we're spending our money, but one of the things I thought about which would help with Madam President's initial version and now this, is, is this implicit, or is there any way we could do a quick-on-a-fly amendment to see the, will the council to just point out that the expenditure should be, like, published on our page? If we're going to go up to $20,000, then the public should be able to just click on our page and say, what, what are they spending their money on? Is that, you agree with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And so is that any way, do we need to write that in, or can we just ask you to do it?
Madam President and Counsel Harris, so we've all along been tracking the use of the $5,000 fund, so it would be very easy for us to publish that information.
And so we don't need to actually amend it? Okay. So that's an understanding that as we increase, that the transparency is going to be there. So if anyone wants to know how we're spending this money, it's going to be very easy, just for a few clicks. Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just curious, how many of us as counselors have needed this kind of money in our...
I always run out. I always run out. And I've, and I always have to go begging to the administration to do meetings, because if, so it's like, well, this meeting really has to do with public safety, so can the cops help me out? This meeting really has to do with this community center, so can family and community center help me out? Because I run out of money all the time.
How much money do you spend for, I mean, what do you spend?
It depends on, I mean, my, my district-wide meeting can oftentimes exceed, I mean, if you're getting the face painting and the other stuff that we do.
Oh, so they're not actually meetings, they're like gatherings? It's not like you come to talk about crime or something?
It depends. Sometimes I'll have a lot of meetings. And if you're mailing, mail's not cheap.
Okay. I, I have a hard time with that. I, I have a very difficult time with that.
Okay. So anyone signed up to speak? No? So there's a motion in a second for approval of RA2 as amended, correct? All those in favor, say yes and raise your hand. What, did I, hold on. Oh, I thought we did. Okay. There's a motion in a second for an amendment one to RA192. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
So that's seven, six-three? Okay. So then we're back on the bill, as amended. So this is, there's a motion in a second for approval of RA2 as amended. All those in favor, say yes and raise your hand? Yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
So that's a six-three again. So now we are on item E, which is Counsel Sanchez and Borrego, RA3.
Thank you, Madam President. This is RA-19-3, and this is amending the city council rules of procedure, Article Three, Section Seven, dealing with the amendments, floor substitutes, provisions of the city council procedures. And basically, this rules amendment proposes to amend and clarify the city council rules for submitting substitutes and amendments to the capital improvements and operating bills. With these changes, substitutes, and amendments, this would be subject to the following rules. Any committee substitute for the committee of the whole must be received by the staff and distributed to counselors at least 24 hours prior to the committee of the whole meeting where the substitute would be considered. You want to go and proceed? And Borrego, I can continue? My voice is about going, but I can continue.
I actually would. This, if you recall, at our budget meeting, we had some confusion regarding how things were submitted, and I think that this helps clarify that. So I urge your support.
Well, there's one more thing also, Madam President. Committee amendments and the floor amendments would be possible at COW and all the way to the final meeting of the council, so long as they are in the dais by 5:00 p.m. I know that Counsel Winter had a issue with one of that, one of the bills coming forward, and it was, it was here after 5:00 p.m. at the city council meetings. And basically, what could come up till 5:00 o'clock would be committee amendments and floor amendments, but no floor substitutes. And I urge your support, Madam President.
So there's a motion in second, and we have Counsel Gibson, then I'll go to you, Mr. Rayo.
You, Madam President. So substitutes at least 24 hours prior to the committee of the whole, to the budget. And any committee substit, and then floors, other floors substitutes would not be, oh, that's the COW. Okay. So anyway, just, if you have a floor substitute you're going to put up, or a committee substitute, I'm sorry, I'm not saying this right at all. Committee substitutes at least 24 hours before the committee of the whole meeting. Floor substitutes can't be put up after the last committee of the whole meeting, and then, oh, so they're all about committee of the whole meetings. All right. I don't have a question. Sorry. Thanks.
Mr. Rayo.
Madam President and counselors, I am to assume that the, once, assuming whatever you all decide on this piece of legislation, that we will be given instruction in terms of how administration, if we need a floor substitute, how that will be processed? Because right now, you all refer to staff, I'm assuming, as council staff, or is that also applies to administration staff? Just to make sure we're all on the same page.
It should basically be for all staff, including the administration.
Any other questions? Comments? Counsel Borrego and Sanchez to close.
Heard your support.
Duro.
There's a motion in second for RA3, amending the city council rules of procedure. Why, why am I reading it? Boy, I'm tired. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. And before we adjourn the meeting, I don't mean to digress, but there is an opportunity for other business. Just wanted to say real quickly, you know, when we're talking about Presbyterian and all that dialogue, we have Sunvan who will take, transport people to Presbyterian Hospital, but Sunvan can transport them to RUSC, and they actually have medical doctors that some of these folks see. So just a, a thought. So there be no further business. The city council meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.